Let's call the meeting to order. Roll call please.
Commissioner Taylor.
Let's present.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner DeTeen.
Here.
Commissioner for meeting.
Here.
Your Harrison.
We are pleased to have Ken Philbin here, who would offer a word of prayer.
Commissioner Taylor, can I just, two seconds?
Seventy.
I just want to share something with you as a, you know, today being election day. You know, I've been one that has been a proponent of being involved politically and, you know, letting my opinion be known and writing senators and congressmen and commissioners. And, you know, I know it's important, our civic duty, to vote and to be involved, but you know, I have, but there's one thing that I think that I have in the past neglected and gotten caught up in is the fact that, you know, we need God. God's the one who really, that we need most. And that's where real change comes from. And I just wanted to point that out to everybody tonight, it's our need of the Lord. And as we call upon His name tonight for this meeting, you know, we just ask His blessing upon our nation and upon our city. Big decisions being made today. So Father, we do come to you in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, and we recognize our absolute need and dependence upon you. Lord, your word says that a nation is not saved by the strength of its army, by horses and chariots, but, but Lord, our nation is strong because of you. And so Lord, we come to you today and we just ask your blessing upon these elections that are taking place even now, and as the results come in, Lord, we leave those in your hands. Lord, ultimately, we look to you. And even in this council meeting this night, God, we just ask for your guidance and direction upon each of our leaders here tonight. And God, we just continue to ask your blessing upon our city. We thank you, God, for your protection upon our police department, Lord, the way you watch over our officers and our fire department and all those, God, that are first responders. Bless these guys, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Please don't with me to the, how do I do, lead us to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Agenda changes. Citizens comments. We have four. Clare, Ericant Beach Park, Corringle's Kingdom.
I just wanted to take the time to address the council tonight on behalf of Corringle's Kingdom. We have come to a stop sign. Since we were closed last year, week before Christmas, before, I mean, week before we were to open, we had been pursuing all the avenues to become ADA compliant. And all the avenues, whether it's on Lake, through the county or through the state, all lead back to Zion. So I'm pleased that you would reconsider your stance with us. All we wanted to do was to bring the Christmas display to the city of Zion Beach Park with the power, Lake County, Kenosha. The people from the Midwestern Hospital that come, they came in three generations to enjoy the Christmas display. We're just asking that you would reconsider your stance with us. Open up your arms to us like you have to the Dungeon of Doom. It's been heartbreaking to pick up the paper all the time and see that you're making concessions for the Doom all the time. All we're asking is for you to just rethink and help us. We can't exist without you, nor do we want to. We want to be a part of Zion. We want to be something that you're proud to say that you have here. We, we're not doing it for ourselves. We're not doing it to make a profit. We're not doing it for selfish motives. We've had people lined up to help us. We've had people lining up to be Santas. These people aren't getting paid. They're coming because we're doing this for free for the community. But we can't do it without your support. So I'm just here to ask that you could open up your hearts and find a way to help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, do you have any response?
Not at this time.
I don't have a response at this time, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I am Bill Brenner, 2525 Ealem. I rise this evening to respectfully request, before you take any action on the consent agenda, the next item, that you modify item B. The United States Marine Corps birthday is next Monday, the 10th. I would request that you make that change before you approve the consent agenda. I thank you for your time, your courtesy, and your attention to this matter.
Thank you. Charles Fitzgerald, Zion.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mayor Proten.
I'm Charles Fitzgerald. I have a question in regards to an expenditure of approximately $40,000 to upgrade our equipment for the purpose of cable casting. And has that purchase taken place? And has the council considered, because not everybody has Comcast. You have many other avenues out there to get information through our TVs. The Internet, other satellite. Have you considered, I would strongly urge you to consider looking at those other venues in order to get more of the city council meetings publicized out to us? So please take that into consideration. If you have, I, that's, Gibby?
We have a different AT&amp;T cables at the Shiloh Center.
Yes, sir.
And the engineers will be over there hooking that up. Tom worked on that for years to get that. So we have got that.
Excellent. That's, I figured, that's great. Thank you. No, I know you are. Gibby, 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 come back.
It's my, it's my understanding also, Jim, that, and Charles, that there's a piece of equipment that is either on its way or it's on backwater that will allow the council meetings to be played on the city's website and on, I believe it's, what's it go, Flo?
ZBAG.
ZBAG, yeah.
So hopefully that'll be happening.
Excellent. That's what I wanted to ask. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item six, consent agenda. Please read the agenda items.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't mean to interrupt, but I thought you said you had four people that wanted to speak. And I don't know if we're missing someone.
No. I misspoke.
Okay, well, I, maybe I misheard.
Ready. Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on October 21st, 2014 at 7:00 p.m. Proclaimations, United States Marine Corps 239th Birthday, November 10th, 2014. National Red Ribbon Week, November 2nd through the 8th, 2014. Receiving place on file audit for the fiscal year, May 1, 2013 through April 30th, 2014, for the presentation by Jacob Leno, Principal at Clifton Larson Allen L.L.P. Dr. Nabel?
Thank you. You have, if you still have, in front of you, a copy of the audit for the fiscal year and in April of the year 2014. We have Jacob Leno, who's the principal at Clifton Larson Allen L.L.P., who's our audit firm, as well as Jordan Lewis tonight, who's in the trenches for most of the time working on the audits. So I asked them to go through page by page, make sure that we understand everything in here. So, I'm kidding. Fire. But they do, they would like to at least get in front of the council, have a brief presentation on the audit, and give you the opportunity to ask any questions about the process.
Well, thank you. And yes, I, I saw the width of your report here and thought you might favor walking through this report, being that I'm one of two agenda items standing between you and the rest of your evenings today. So I will try to keep my comments brief, but certainly as we go through this information, if you have any detailed questions on some of the financial information that you see, we can, we can talk through that. So I'd like to just share with you on the next page of your handouts here, the agenda. What I'd like to give you an idea of is where do we spend our time when we come out to do your audit work? Give you a little bit of a brief summary of the financial results and point out a few things that I think are of importance. Walk through the reports that we issue as a result of that, and of course, open it up to any questions. So the first item being the significant audit areas. Cash and investments is an area where we spend quite a bit of time making sure that your bank reconciliation processes are timely and in place, that the items that are reported there are appropriate, that reconciling items appear reasonable, and really confirming those balances with your financial institutions as well. Taxes receivable and the related revenues and deferred inflows that go along with those receivables. We spend time in each of those areas ensuring that the periods in which those balances relate to are appropriately classified. And general and payroll disbursements is really on your expenditure side. You're seeing that the invoices that you're processing throughout the year and the payroll that you're processing throughout the year is supported by the appropriate documentation and it's following the controls that you have in place. And then long-term obligations, really the debt that you have as it relates to the city, seeing that those amounts are being paid on time, that they're being paid appropriately, and that any sort of restrictions that are in place related to reserve balances are being appropriately monitored. So I did want to spend just a little bit of time here on the financial information. And I'll just point out a couple of things here. The next page has that titled "All Governmental Funds." This is really a very high-level snapshot of your two major funds, the general and the TIF Special Revenue Fund, as well as all of your other non-major funds grouped together. And so if you see at the bottom of the page, the end-of-the-year balances, you can see that really every fund improved their fund balance position as of the end of the year. You see the general fund moved from 2.5 to about 3.5 million. The TIF fund improved the deficit there to 542,000. And then your total of all your other funds improved to 1.2 million dollars. So I did just want to point out a couple of things on fund balance. You'll notice that the categories of fund balance are presented at the bottom of the page there. Non-spendable represents funds that are really tied up in things like prepaid or inventories or non-current receivables, things that you wouldn't be able to use for current expenditure. So it's important to understand that that piece is really peeled off of your available fund balance. Restricted represents all those non-major governmental funds, where any kind of fund balance that you've accumulated is really limited in purpose to the purpose of that fund. It can't be used for general operations. And then unassigned is really any deficit fund balances that you have, as well as your general fund residual fund balance. So you see 3.1 million, 3.18 million at the end of the year. That represents about 19% of your expenditures for the year. So just over two months' working capital available in that unassigned fund balance. So that's a, that's a fairly, fairly typical position in which you'd see for a general fund fund balance as it relates to expenditures for the year. That's, that's important to have that as, as it relates to being able to absorb the working capital needs throughout the year. I did want to spend just a little bit of time on the next page, walking through the general fund budget information to really explain how the fund balance moved from that 2.5 to 3.5 million. And so you see there, the, both the actual and the budget information. You see total revenues had a positive variance of about 2.7 million. And I'll really break that down into two things. One being, there's a difference in how your budgeted information is presented versus how your financial information is reported for GAAP purposes. And we did talk about this a little bit last year, if you remember. The tax levy for both the police and fire pension contribution amounts for budget purposes is netted. So that total amount is about 1.5 million dollars. That means that you're going to have a positive variance on the revenue side and a negative variance on the, on the expenditure side for that amount each year, as, as it relates to those two amounts. So really, that full negative variance on the expenditure side of about 1.89 million is really driven by that expenditure difference. The other positive variance that is reported within the 2.7 million dollars on the revenue side relates to the sale of the easement that you, that you incurred throughout, in 2014. That was about 1.2 million dollars in terms of net proceeds related to that. So those two strong positive variances led to that 2.7 million, ultimately driving that addition to fund balance in the general fund of about a million dollars. I did just want to mention briefly on the governmental activities. This is a second basis of reporting that's included in your financial statements. And what this does is it brings all of your financial information together and, and reports it on a full accrual basis, meaning all of your long-term assets and all of your long-term liabilities are also included. So things like the building here, the land and, and the roads that the city's responsible for maintaining, all of those items are captured as an asset. That's what reports up to that 31 million dollars you see there. And then the long-term obligations, the debt that is tied to those activities of 13.2 million dollars drives you to a net position on that full accrual basis of 22.8 million dollars. And then finally, I wanted to mention on the proprietary fund side, this is your water and sewer and your waste and, and waste collection funds. Just a brief summary here, you see the change in net position about the middle of the page of $537,000 worth of a loss in the water and sewer, and just about break even there in the waste collection. The one thing I'd point out is that the water and sewer typically do more hover around that break even point as well, but there were some pretty significant repairs and maintenances, maintenance expenses that drove that 3.6 million dollars in operating expense to a higher level than what it typically has been. So that's really driving the substantial portion of that reduction in that position, that 537, 537,000 dollars. So at the end of the year, your water and sewer fund did decrease by that amount, down to 6.3 million. And again, I wanted to just point out the categories related to those net position amounts. You see invested in capital assets really represents your net investment in your infrastructure, net of related debt. So again, that balance really isn't available for appropriation, it's tied up in your infrastructure. Restricted balances represent balances on hand for your debt covenants. And then unrestricted balances is really what you typically have more available for that working capital, so that 2.9 million dollars is really more available. I will mention what's unique within the water and sewer, though, is that a large receivable in that fund related to inter-funds is about 1.7 million. So while it's not set aside in one of those other two categories, it's really also not available to you for appropriation or for, for use. So really what that leaves you with is about 1.2 million within the water and sewer. And then finally, the fiduciary funds represent the funds that you've accumulated for both the police pension and fireman's pension. Just have a very high-level snapshot of the additions and reductions. Additions are generally your contributions into the plan, as well as any investment earnings that you've accumulated on existing balances within there. And then the deductions really are administrative of the plan and then payments to beneficiaries. So you see both of those funds were able to accumulate a positive change in the net position, building those balances to what you see there at the bottom of the page. And then finally, just wanted to walk through some of the information within the footnotes of your financial statements. This significant disclosures, where if you're going to spend a little bit of time in any of these areas, some of these, I think you may find some relevant information. And the cash and investments, the information reported in here really delineates your risks associated to any of your deposits and investments, whether they're uncollateralized or uninsured because of amounts exceeding FDIC insurance limits. Those types of risks are reported to you within those cash investments. Capital assets has that information about those assets that we talked through, that the city is responsible for maintaining. Employee retirement and OPEB plans give you detailed information about what kinds of, between the IMRF, the police and the fireman pension, as well as the health care plan for retirees, what kinds of liabilities you have on the horizon related to those and the funding status of those plans. Long-term liabilities represents your external debt. And fund balance in that position is an area where you can see a lot of those categories of those funds that have been accumulated. What are they restricted for? Or what, what, what are those funds available for use for? That really takes us through a high-level summary of the financial statement document, the very thick document that you have in front of you. I also did want to just briefly mention the audit communication letter, because there's some required communications within there that I just want you to be aware of. The first of which is the qualitative aspects of accounting practices. And this really stems from one of two things, either the estimates that you have involved in preparing your financial statements or the accounting policies that you, that you use. And so this year, there was a new accounting policy. It relates, it's referred to as GASB 65, but it basically relates to your debt issuance costs. Those amounts are no longer amortized on your financial statements, they're just expensed when you incur them. And so that required a restatement of your financial information to pull those amounts off so that on a go-for basis, they're no longer reported. So it's really just a new pronouncement that was implemented this year, not a, not an error or anything of that nature. On the estimate side, the one significant estimate that I point out relates to those OPEB liabilities. I talked about the health insurance liabilities for retirees. You do receive actuarial services to help you arrive at what numbers would be available there. And we review those assumptions and review the information within there. Audit adjustments, we're happy to report to you that we had no audit adjustments as a result of our audit efforts this year. And that's really a strong financial indicator of the city, of the staff at the city. It's also, it should be considered a reassuring factor for you in terms of the financial information that you're receiving throughout the year is consistent with the financial information that ultimately is opined on by us with a clean opinion. So it's good to have that consistency in that as you're making decisions based on that interim financial information, it's consistent with what external users would expect to see as well. Other matters is really just there to identify if we have any significant difficulties or disagreements encountered performing the audit. And I'm happy, again, to report that we had none of those. In fact, we are about four months earlier this year reporting to you than we were last year. And really, I have to turn the kudos over to your staff there to improve that process and improve the timeliness, as well as really make themselves available, make us a priority to, to be able to improve that timeframe. So we realize that our audit effort is a distraction as, from the day-to-day type tasks that they're also involved in. And I was just happy to be talking with you that much earlier in the year this year. And then finally, management representations are also included within that letter to say that management has accepted responsibility over the financial information, that they've really provided us with any kind of relevant information that would be of concern in preparing the financial statements. The one report that I mentioned that we did not issue this year is a management letter. If you remember, we did have a couple items last year to, to put out there for consideration. Those items have been addressed. And so we, we were not required to report a management letter to you again. So again, a very strong signal, a strong positive step towards the things that we have been working on towards improving the process. So really, just in closing, I just wanted to reiterate that the record, we found the records to be in very good order, that we were able to perform our audit without any, any sort of delays or difficulties, and that we, we had the full cooperation of the city staff in that process.
I guess I'll start. I guess first of all, I'd like to thank and congratulate Commissioner Taylor and Director Finance, Nabel, and all the department heads and everybody in the city that works with them on getting these financial statements together. I think it's great that we're so much earlier, and I truly do appreciate that. I do have a couple of questions. If you were looking, as, how long have you been doing this audit for the city?
For the city? Myself personally? This is now completing our third year. I really got kind of involved at the very tail end three years ago, and now I've completed two full audits with the city.
And my, my question is, I guess that it is relevant. How, how are we doing? I mean, what do we look like for the next two years coming up?
Just sort of a...
I, I see these numbers, and I try as hard as I can to figure out how this all fits in with our future, but I guess I'm asking, I want to get an extra participation.
Sure. Just an off-the-cuff kind of response. I'm very pleased with the progress that you've made in a lot of different areas. One of the things that David and I spent some time talking through were deficit fund balance positions, both last year, I think we talked about this a little bit, as well as, again, updates on that this year, to say, you know, what is the plan? And recognizing that some of these things are going to take some time to really get a fully, fully structurally sound approach to balancing those items. But seeing very strong progress in a lot of those areas as we move through each of the, each of the funds where an increase had been put in place or a expenditure reduction had been put in place, you see the positive effects. And knowing that it is going to take some time and you don't really want to pull... And knowing that it is going to take some time, and you don't really want to pull that all off in any one given year as you try to manage the impact that that would have on residents as well as your operations. So I've seen very strong progress there. I mean, there is some steps to go, but I feel as though you've laid out a plan to correctly address each of the pieces that, you know, required some changes.
When you mentioned the retirement funds, how healthy are those?
Those are in a stronger position than many of the entities that we've worked with in the past.
I asked.
Well, I mean, there are entities that are all the way up to the fully funded 100% plan-funded status, and you're not there yet. And that's another area where you've put in some plans to restore some of the contributions over the next, I think, remaining three years from what you've had in the past. So again, I'm seeing progress, and I'm seeing a position that's favorable as it relates to many of your peers.
And a lot of employees here under IMRF, what is that status?
Honestly, I'll probably have a better answer for you in about a year and a half. And the reason for that is the financial accounting rules related to IMRF are changing. GASB's passed new rules that will actually allocate the IMRF's funded status very deliberately to each of the participating communities. And that number will actually come onto your financials, whether it's if you were in an overfunded status, which you won't be, or an unfunded status. And really, that change was made in the same timeframe as some changes in how they arrive at that number and how they allocate that number to all of the participants. So while they've technically always had some kind of basis for determining that status, a lot of those assumptions are now being more streamlined, and they have less flexibility over how, what kinds of rates of returns they can use and how long they can amortize certain fluctuations within the market. So if I give you an answer today, it really wouldn't be relevant for very long. So I think within the next, I believe the implementation period will be for, not your next fiscal year, but the following, 4/30/16, will have that full impact. And really, by the end of 4/30/15, we should have a better idea because they do have to arrive at some beginning balances so that we can understand what occurred throughout the year as well, so.
And last year, when you were here, we talked about perhaps applying for recognition for financial reporting.
Mm-hmm.
And you indicated there was a cost, and I thought we had a consensus that we wanted to do that.
Yes.
I don't see that.
We did not fully get there this year. And we have been working with the finance staff, obviously, to progress towards there. The remaining pieces of what's known as the statistical section is 10 years' worth of data that not all of it's readily available. And so we do have chunks of that pulled together. We've got a plan to accumulate the rest. But as we looked out and said, what's more important here, you know, issuing, going for the full CAFR award as indicated, or being in that 1031 issuance state for the first time in a long time? We thought it was important to get that basic financial statement done, have it in the past, and let's move forward and accumulate in that statistical. I would be optimistic that we'd have that for that 4/30/15 year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Yeah. Second call of roll, please.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Dutine?
Aye.
Commissioner Flamini?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Taylor?
Consider the passing of resolution as follows. Ryan?
Resolution for improvements by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code, MFT funds for 2014 patching program for Director Colangelo.
Thank you, Your Honor. What you have in your package is a supplemental resolution for improvement by municipality regarding the streets and highways under the Illinois Highway Code. During the course of the patching program, we encounter additional paper deficiencies that require repair. This will allow the city to utilize an additional $5,100 in motor fuel tax funding for the project. Staff is requesting and recommends approval of the attached resolution.
Any questions or concerns? I entertain the motion.
I would recommend that we approve the resolution on $5,100 of motor fuel tax funding to finish up this 2014 patching program. Second.
Second, call of roll, please.
Commissioner Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner Dutine?
Aye.
Commissioner Flamini?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Taylor?
Aye.
The talk man of commentary. You people. There's a chance.
Police chief has something to say. You have something to say, don't you?
Yeah, I can speak on a couple of things. As you probably saw in the newspaper, and I sent the city council an email, our department was involved in a long, ongoing investigation. Recently, that included a lot of federal agencies. I just want to reassure the citizens that your police department is working hard for you. We will continue these type of cases. We are going to continue to work diligently with the federal agencies, state's attorney's office, Lake County Mag, quite a few groups to continue these type of cases. Our focus remains on the drug, gang, and gun problems. I can reassure the citizens that this is going to remain our focus. This case, I think, speaks highly to the police department's resolve at dealing with this. I know there's been a lot of concerns, a lot of comments, and people don't always see what we're doing behind the scenes. These type of cases, we can't reveal that information. We don't even reveal it to the other departments within the city or city council. These cases are very confidential, and there's a lot of officers who put their lives at risk to work these cases and recover, et cetera. So I just want to reassure you that we're going to continue this. Rest assured that there are things going on that we can't release to the public or to the media, so.
Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Jim, if I could?
Yeah.
I just want to report that on the baseball property, we had a Phase 1 environmental study done, and it came back saying that we need a Phase 2. The staff is quite confident that we won't find anything out there, but I did tell the staff to go ahead and do a Phase 2 out there because I don't want it to come back later that somebody told us we should have a Phase 2, and we don't do a Phase 2, and then they do find something. But I think it's just, at this point, we need to be sure that we're covering all bases. So, and the amount of that was $6,000.
What was the basis for Phase 2?
Basis for the Phase 2 is that there might be something there in the future. And the way I understand it is that if, there are two gas stations there that they pointed out, and if there could be leakage in the future, and if we do the Phase 2, and we can be assured that there is no leakage now, when we're purchasing the property, we'll then have a baseline so that if there is, if something's discovered 10 years from now, we can go back and say it wasn't there then, these people are responsible for it. It won't, there shouldn't be a fight about it.
Thank you. Announcement. Diane?
November 15th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon, electronics recycling at Public Works Facility at 322027th Street. On November the 18th, at 6:30 PM is the Zion Township Board meeting. At 7:00 PM is the Zion City Council meeting. November 27th and 28th, city offices are closed for the Thanksgiving holidays.
Item 10, closed session. We need the executive session to deal with collective bargaining. There ain't any future business that come after that. I have a motion and a second. Come on.
Second.
Second, call of motion, please.
Mr. Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner Dutine?
Aye.
Commissioner Flamini?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Taylor?
Aye. Thank you.
...to be successful in achieving our staffing needs in more economical fashion. One area of concern for staffing is going to occur with major holidays. When we do not meet our minimum staff in due to scheduled benefit time by our full-time staff and the lack of availability of our paid-on-premise, we may be in a position to force full-time staff in at a double-time rate. The holidays we're concerned are outlined in the locals' collective bargaining agreement. And so to improve the chances of paid-on-premise personnel picking up these days and prevent a full-time employee from being forced in at double time, I am requesting that council approve a stipend for our paid-on-premise personnel that work any of the holidays listed below at $100 per 12-hour shift. Based on our current salary expenditures and foreseen scheduling for the paid-on-premise personnel, there will be minimal impact on our current salary line item. The total cost of the program moving forward into budget years would be comparable to the cost of one forced-in employee at a double-time rate based on rank and year's service. I respectfully request approval of a holiday stipend for paid-on-premise staff effective immediately.
Is there a motion?
I move for approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to approve this stipend for paid-on-premise staff only in the federal risk department. And a second discussion.
Yes. Chief, how many paid-on-staff would be coming in on Memorial Day?
One.
Just one?
Yeah, it's always going to be, we only allow for one paid-on-premise at a time.
Any further discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Flamini?
Aye.
Commissioner Dutine?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Harrison?
Aye. Item A is discussion on the update on the status of debt certificates being issued for the purchase of property at Route 173 in Green Bay Road. Director Nabel?
Thank you, ma'am commissioners. I just wanted to bring before you an update on what was approved at a previous council meeting. The preliminary official statement that we approved at a prior council meeting showed that the debt certificates would be going to market seeking a 10-year term at a rate not to exceed 5.5%. Obviously, that's based on that somebody will buy those bonds and buy that certificate. They would do that, however, it would be at a higher interest rate. They were able to come back to us and say, we could do a five-year term with a balloon at the end of it at 3.55%, which keeps our rate down. And then we had a chance to refinance those after a year.
After one year?
After one year. We could start the process of looking at refinancing, and obviously, depending on what we would do with the property within those first five years, you know, that would be advantageous to us versus under a 10-year term, we weren't able to refinance it for like five years. So we told the bond council to proceed with that, that the five-year term. We just wanted to give the update to council on going forward with that.
Thank you.
What's the savings in the first five years between 5.5 and 3.55?
Well, we, under the five-year term, we're actually able to, we're kind of able to set our principal and interest payment, and then it just goes on with the balloon at the end. So we kept the principal payments around the $280,000, which is what the taxes were. So if we weren't able to do that, you're looking at about $80,000 to $90,000 difference just because of the interest rate annually.
All right. Thank you very much, Director Nabel. Item I is asking to consider approval incentive for employees needing wellness screening criteria. I think I understand that. Director Nabel?
If you do understand, I'll make sure you don't bite into this. All right. You've got before you, you've had a lengthy memo. About a year ago, we implemented, the city implemented a wellness committee to try and look at just overall health of employees, looking to try and get our health insurance claims a bit under control. We're self-insured when it comes to health insurance. We go through Blue Prosthetic Shield or whatever insurance provider, get the network discounts, and then we ultimately pay whatever the claims are. Part of the idea of getting these under control was we started offering free health screenings to employees, where they could go and do a blood draw, answer surveys, things like that, to potentially identify, be proactive about potential major health concerns so that, you know, we could identify a high blood pressure, a high cholesterol issue before it developed into a condition that costs hundreds of thousands of dollars of medical claims. As a result of that, we got 54 employees take that screening out of the 100, and so they were eligible. Everything is HIPAA-protected, there's no confidentiality issue, but they were able to provide us a summary report saying that there were specific areas that had potential for improvement. So the next step of this was that we wanted to offer incentive to employees that improved in those areas. So we picked five, what they call biometrics, which is blood pressure, body mass index, cholesterol, HDL ratio, triglycerides, and glucose. That if employees that took the screening last year to this year, if they improved by more than 10% in three out of five of those, what we would do is we would offer, we would pay 10% more of the single employee premium. Basically, for a single employee on the policy, we would pay 100% of that premium. For employees who are a single plus one, they would get the same dollar equivalent as an individual and same thing with family. That would come to about $1,000 a year annually of benefit. And just based on those 54 employees that took the screening, if they estimated that it was about $120,000 a year of health claims related to these conditions. So if every employee improved and got healthy in those areas, we'd be looking at about $54,000 a cost annually to save potentially $120,000 of claims. Not to mention potential overtime from sick days, you know, all the other intangible stress on employees for cover-up shortages, things of that nature. So since it's a benefit, an additional benefit, that's not currently in personnel policies, I want to arrange a council for proposal. We would be able to do this for any non-renewed employees if you approved this tonight.